Good evening and welcome to the July 23 City Council meeting. And we will begin this City Council meeting with a public forum. And I just have kind of a special framework for some of you, just in case it has missed your notice, that as always, when you wish to speak in the public forum, you need to fill out a request to speak form. But we have three issues that are off the table tonight for speakers. You may not address the proposed Gordon Hotel sign, the proposed Fifth Avenue Alley vacation, or the proposed changes to the Skinnerbutte height limitation area. The evidentiary records for all three of those items closed last Monday night, so we cannot accept more testimony. So if you are planning to speak about those issues, please do not do so. And if you begin speaking about those, I will ask you to stop, since that is part of the legal requirement. For those, all of you who wish to speak on any other topic, you'll have the usual three minutes. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. The timer lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we do have the warm-up seat for, I'll read two names, so the second name can sit and be ready to get into the seat. And I just, I've neglected to say this the last couple of meetings, which is just to remind everyone that we want to make sure this is a safe place. And so we ask people not to have any sort of verbal outbursts. If you want to show your approval, you can always do this. But we want all speakers to be able to speak freely and for everyone to feel comfortable here. So just a gentle reminder about that. And I understand we have, let's see, we have 19 speakers today. The first one, Ralph McDonald, followed by Howard Saxon.
Good evening, councilors and Mayor Viness. I'm Ralph McDonald from Betty Taylor's Ward Two. And on June 20, 2018, the following resolution was passed unanimously by the Sustainability Commission. I'm going to read our resolution. I've put a copy of it in front of everybody. I think you've got it previously, too, but I put it there just because I'm going to read it quickly. Resolution of the Eugene Sustainability Commission honoring our Children's Trust. Whereas climate change and greenhouse gas increasingly threatens to diminish our environmental ability, social equity, and economic prosperity of both the city of Eugene and the broader global community, and the Sustainability Commission is committed to addressing these climate change issues, both under our charter as a city commission and under the Climate Recovery Ordinance enacted by the city of Eugene. Whereas young persons today residing in Eugene and elsewhere, and also future generations of our community stand to be disproportionately impacted by the lack of political, scientific, and juridical action to address climate change, and also young persons within our community and nation working together as our Children's Trust, a Eugene-based nonprofit organization, have spoken up and shown leadership in bringing these matters to the attention of the courts and raising public awareness concerning these grave issues. Therefore, the Sustainability Commission of Eugene today wishes to declare our goodwill and support for the work of our Children's Trust through this tribute resolution. And also, the Sustainability Commission elects to request that the City Council of Eugene consider the honor of our Children's Trust through city declaration and resolution of tribute and appreciation. I would just add that I've known Giuliani family, Katya Timm and Kelsey, for maybe 35, 30 years, live within a couple of blocks of me, and seen their environmental work, not just on this. Kelsey Giuliani is the lead plaintiff of this action. And I've heard, you know, the, obviously, it has broad support on our commission and in Eugene, and hopefully on the council. I would show this latest issue of Harper's Magazine, which shows the world on fire. And the fires are mapped for 2017 in Northwest, Pacific Northwest doesn't even rent, mention, it's not even mentioned. So I urge people to check out this Harper's for this current month. Also, people have said it's only symbolic, a city resolution of support. One person emailed me and said it's only symbolic what our Children's Trust does, that it doesn't address deforestation, it doesn't address oil extraction. The bus boycott in Alabama, was it in Alabama, was symbolic, too. Symbolic is very powerful. Thank you.
Thank you. Howard Saxon, followed by Todd Boyle.
Good evening. I'm Howard Saxon, resident of Eugene and Councilor Piers Ward. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Sustainability Commission. The Commission recently submitted a request to the council regarding the franchise agreement with Northwest Natural. This request, if approved, would direct the city manager to determine if the city of Eugene has the legal authority to include greenhouse gas reductions and related requirements in the franchise agreement with Northwest Natural. The current franchise agreement expires next October. This is a 20-year agreement. It was last renewed in 1999 and did not substantially change from the previous agreement that was signed by the city in 1979. The current agreement primarily addresses franchise fees and the use of the city's right-of-way. Based on the 2015 community greenhouse gas emission inventory prepared by the city, natural gas consumption or combustion represents 26% of our total emissions. One of the Climate Recovery Ordinances, or CRO, goals is to reduce community fossil fuel usage by 50% from 2010 levels by the year 2030, 12 years from now. And reducing natural gas combustion and resulting greenhouse gas emissions is one of the actions that will be necessary if we're to meet this goal. The Climate Action Plan update currently underway will identify how the CRO requirements will be met. Many of these actions will likely be voluntary, but those may be insufficient to meet CRO requirements. It's important to determine if Northwest, the Northwest Natural franchise agreement can be used to effect reductions in natural gas use. The Commission respectfully suggests that this request be approved by council as soon as possible, so that city staff have sufficient time to conduct a research on this topic, and the results of this evaluation are available for the Climate Action Plan update and future council action on the franchise agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Boyle, followed by Brad Foster.
Thank you. I'm in Ellen's Linkus Ward. I want to talk about the housing tools and strategies process that's going on that the council launched earlier this year. And I seem to understand that this is like a six-month study to create a synthesis and coordinate the policy on the CET and what we're going to do about ADUs and the urban reserve study and growth monitoring and so forth. And also a realization of envision Eugene, so it's ordinance stuff, and this is like where the rubber hits the road. And I urge everyone to read, all citizens of the city, to read the May 30 council packet on what this, this six-month tools and strategies process. Okay? And I also agree that with the idea that it should have, like, apparently 30 people are going to be in this, 30 to 40 representatives of groups like the builders or Chamber of Commerce or neighborhood associations and so forth, based on the criteria that they should have already done research and be capable of contributing in a meaningful way, because it's so complicated. I mean, that's not a bad idea. So what I'm going to ask for is that the, those meetings that are just going to start in September and they're going to run for a couple of months should be either televised, you know, on the channel, or at least allow outside journalists to come and video those. So here are my concerns. Affordable housing is defined way too broadly. And because if you, for example, talk about 44% Alice and the city's identified 13,500 units of deficit, well, that's like $2 billion worth of construction. And if you have, there's a principle that if you have, if you define a bracket like that, that what will happen is that the aid will migrate to the top end of the bracket. And you want to have the opposite happen. You don't want to have a bracket. You want to have a formula that applies the aid where it's needed most, which is at the bottom. And so we should try to aim for people who can only afford rents below 400 a month. And then after we succeed with that, then we can talk about some more layers of that. So that'd be people way down in the bottom 10%. And just watch out for bracketing also when the giveaways of revenue in the CET and in relaxing service development, SDC charges, because if you say, okay, $250,000 houses, then you don't have to pay a CET. Well, 250,000, those guys are way up there. I don't care about people who can afford to buy a $250,000 house. We shouldn't be giving away any revenue to those guys until we take care of the people who are never going to be able to afford more than a $50,000 house, or the rent equivalent, which is like 400, $300 or $400 a month. There's a ton of people in Eugene living on $800 a month, or $600 a month. And then finally, you've got to have a firewall or a structural barrier to prevent any of your aid applied from being charged market rent. Because anything you build that's so-called affordable housing, I just throw out that word and start talking about low-income housing. It's going to be priced at market rates, and it's not going to help the people that you want to help. So you've got to have a firewall in there somewhere.
Thank you. Brad Foster, followed by John Thielking.
Hi, I'm Brad Foster. I'm in Clare Scheretz Ward, Ward Seven. I guess I'm going to merge the two people who just talked. I'm going to talk about climate change, I'm going to talk about housing indirectly. Climate change clearly the number-one threat facing humanity in history. If you don't believe that, go learn some more. Nationally, statewide, locally, our number-one source of climate change emissions, something probably most people in this room use today, it's transportation. Number-one in transportation is a car. Eugene has some policies in place that are doing some harm in that line. The concept of induced demand very simply states that the more capacity you add for cars, you will add more cars to the road to more than meet that capacity. The converse works as well. As you take away capacity, you will remove more cars than the capacity you took away. One source of capacity is parking. And our code currently requires, as builders build new housing, one unit of parking for every unit of housing. A block away from me, I just watched a 21-unit apartment complex is going up, and the first thing they did was remove a small grove of trees to provide for 21 parking spaces. The housing fit on the bare land, the trees had to go for the parking. Two-tenths of a mile away from me, I'm watching, I'm looking at the plans that call for a parking lot adjacent to the West Bank bike path. I'm stunned. I don't know what to say. Welcome, urban heat island. Welcome, more climate change. Goodbye, cooling. You like the heat wave? We're going to have more of them. You're causing it. We need to change our parking requirements for new housing. We're never going to get the density we need to make this place levelable. We're never going to get the density we need to get public transit working unless we diminish the amount of parking, not add more to it every time we build something. E-Web property is being developed. Do you know how much parking's going in for that? One off-street parking space for every bedroom, not every unit, every bedroom. This is insane. This is not 1970. We know a lot more than that now. We need to build for the mid and late 21st century, and we need to change our code to accommodate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Thielking, followed by Debbie McGee.
Hello, I'm John Thielking. I live in Ward One. Detaining of immigrants and separation of families at the border is a brand-new phenomenon under Trump that did not exist under Obama in nearly the same form. Obama detained migrant children, that is true, but these people were children who arrived on the U.S. border as unaccompanied minors. Trump, on the other hand, is or was deliberately separating families that properly presented themselves at the boards of entry requesting asylum. Keeping such families together in internment camps, as Trump is now proposing to do, is also a new thing as I adjust. I have an editorial to go along with my bumper sticker that says, "Keep Families Together and Free," that goes into more DQ on this, which are both available on my website, peacestickers.net, which only recently has been reconstructed after a long rebuilding process afterward attacked in December 2017. I also have a seven-day-per-week free mini lending library outside my apartment at 1017 West Eighth Avenue, number three in Eugene. The library currently features DVDs as well as books. Take a book or DVD and leave a book or DVD is the idea behind this. Pretty many libraries are a way to keep the NSA at bay, as the books that are checked out are not recorded for later snooping by the NSA, as currently is required of all government-funded libraries. Another program I have is a way to help internet bloggers make money without the NSA tracking the metadata replies, and also independently of gatekeepers such as Google AdSense, which last time I checked no longer allows me to distribute ads or pay on their network. The basic idea is that you pay $1, have your zero metadata reply posted by sending a hard copy of the reply, plus your donation without a return address or a real name, to the P.O. Box for peacestickers.net. Half of your donation goes to support the blogger who made the original posting. You can contact me about any of the above information by calling or texting me at 541-636-6269, or drop by my apartment on Fridays from 10 to 6, when I have my yard sales to support the homeless. Finally, I'd like to chime in in support of our revolution in Lane County, and as co-chair of the Lane County chapter of the Pacific Green Party, and urge the city council to adopt an ordinance that restricts the distribution of non-resalable plastic straws and other single-use plastic items. Personally, I have temporarily suspended my vegan and vegetarian diets while I'm in hot pursuit of any foods that are not packed in plastic. Killing an animal affects this generation. Letting plastic wander into our oceans is forever. I'm still pondering the cost-benefit analysis of the traditional ecological choices versus simply not using plastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie McGee, followed by Jim New.
Good evening. My name is Deborah McGee. I've lived in the county for 40 years, and I have a little rap rhyme in time for you tonight. Here's the full-meal deal on why we've got to take a pass on more gas. Industry's got this system, and here's what they say: Can't measure all those emissions. Can't do it, no way. Can't measure near the steam tanks, too hot, too dangerous. Can't measure during leak events. And you know what's outrageous? Calling it a clean bridge fuel. Stop swallowing those lies. The truth about emissions is a truth that they despise. Just like big tobacco, we've been inhaling their lies. Don't believe me? Google it for yourself and see. Brand-new study just published, Science Magazine. Methane gas emissions, they go unseen. But they are 63% higher than the EPA's been reporting. Well, Trump's EPA, who knows what they've been snorting? Independent research shows digging a climate hole, because burning of the gas is as bad as burning of the coal. No shame, no blame, people didn't know. Bought a house with all the gas hooked up, ready to go. U.S. Census data say 22% of Eugenians using gas today. That gas makes up eight times more pollution. But if we work together, we can find a solution. We need to be fair, so we can clean up the air. Switching fuel from dirty gas to renewable clean will help us reach our climate goals, and we all know what that means. When people learn the truth, most will make a different choice. Educate the community and listen to their voice. You represent us, keep your hearts true. Sunsetting fracked gas, it's the right thing to do. I think I know what you're thinking, and I agree it's probably true. Sue in our city is what fracked gas will do. But we all have a duty to protect what we love. We can all feel the heat coming down from above. Now, here's something I heard made me stiffen up my back. Here in Oregon, 22 years from now, there'll be no snowpack. No snowpack in 22 years? How can that be? Well, the temperature's rising, we're in an emergency. Melting snow and glaciers, fires blazing all around. Friends, the time is now, we've got to keep it in the ground. If communities will lead, we can build the change we need. But we must be bold, put fossil fuels and all their infrastructure on hold. So here's my no-brainer, one-liner, can't say it no finer. Earth has got a fever, hot as a pepper sprout. If we don't change our ways, we're going to get burned up and out. Have a well-learned, happy summer break. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim New, followed by Patty Heine.
Tough act to follow. My name is Jim New. I live in Ward Seven. Several members of the 350 Eugene attended the large lever shareholder meetings to discuss mitigation and adaptation strategies for the Climate Action Plan on July 10, 11, and 17. We heard encouraging carbon reduction practices, such as fuel switching from gas to electric, electrification, and hybridization of the public bus fleet, new construction goals of net zero by 2023, and introduction of residential home energy scores. There is planning for public cooling centers, hydration centers, stations, public safe zones, air quality relief stations, and the transportation options to support relief for such emergency events. The Highway 99 corridor in West Eugene could be a critical artery of evacuation for such safe zones. We also heard of Eugene's projected average summer temperature, which is now 79 degrees, would be like Chino, California, 89 degrees. And the projected snowpack will be minimal and stream flows reduced by 40 to 60% by 2040. Also, by 2040, there will be a 400 to 500% increase in the number of acres burned in the urban wildlife interface, as the decline of Douglas firs increases and emergency water supplies for the South Eugene Hills become less available. Three local hydroelectric generating stations have been currently taking offline due to low water flows. Due to natural and climate mitigation, I'm sorry, due to climate, natural and climate migration, the population of Eugene will increase by 60,000 by 2035 and to 100,000 by 2065. These facts and projections, and I just touched on a few, were all discussed by the organizations the city hoped would be the most influential in reducing our fossil fuel use by 50% by 2035 to meet the goals of the CRO. The consensus was the burning of fossil fuels and other anthropogenic activities, including deforestation and other agricultural practices, is leading to historical levels of carbon dioxide. Immediate contributions the city council and the mayor could implement as local solutions to climate change would be for a complete transition away from fossil fuels towards clean, safe, renewable, and sustainable resources of energy. Passing a known new fossil fuel ordinance, which was submitted to the council in December 2017, and structuring a Northwest Gas franchise agreement that would prohibit new gas infrastructure and phase out gas by encouraging fuel switching to electricity sends a message to the large-lever shareholders that Eugene is committed to the Climate Action Plan implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Heine, followed by Kelsey Walbrenner.
Good evening, Mayor Viness, city councilors and city staff. My name is Patty Heine. I live in the county. Kudos all around for the keeping to the schedule of the city's Climate Action Plan large lever shareholder meetings. They are well-organized and well-run, and we feel welcome there. We do wonder if the identified large lever shareholders bring back their plans to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in 18 months, or some close version of that. If they do, and they don't help us reach our goals under the CRO, we wonder what the plan is. Meanwhile, last week, we were pleased at the Sustainability Commission to see that we were adding a large lever shareholder there, perhaps under the auspices of being a very large emitter. This one in particular was Seneca Sustainability Energy LLC, as well as the manufacturing company called Kingsford. They're just quite a bit under the International Paper in Springfield, but they are the third down in Lane County. So two and three emitters now are going to be included, which we think is an appropriate step. We appreciate that. We've been following the process with very much interest. The Climate Action Plan, as you know, implements the Climate Recovery Ordinance, and many people have referred to the different goals there. They're shockingly soon. So just to reiterate briefly, in 12 years, we're supposed to be 50% reduced in our greenhouse gas emissions. 50 reduced against 2010 levels. That's in 12 years. At the end of the century, which seems like a very long time, by every year, we're supposed to be coming down by 7.6% in order to contribute our share to get down to 350 parts per million, the safe upper limit in a healthy atmosphere. And the last one is, we will be completely carbon neutral in our city operations in 17 months. Time for a time check before we go on summer break. By Earth Day next April, if all goes according to the plan, the large lever shareholders' collective reductions will be added up, and we'll get to see what the plan is. What if it doesn't meet our CRO emission reduction goals? What then? Will we buy carbon offsets? Will we have a cap 3.0? Will we start over after time has passed? More fires, higher temperatures, saltier and sourer seas. My point, I think you'll all agree, we don't want our own version of the Paris Climate Accord, where it's all voluntary, and where it's insufficient to really meet the scale and the size of the problem. Let's keep track of time. Let's make, we show, make sure we throw everything we've got at this Climate Action Plan. We need to reach our goals. Let's keep it real. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey Walbrenner, followed by Bob Wies.
Hello, councilors and Mayor Viness. My name is Kelsey Walbrenner. I am the administrator of Yopoa Terrace Retirement Apartments, located in downtown Eugene or Ward Seven. For those unfamiliar with Yopoa, we are the 18-story building situated at the base of Skinnerbutte. You may recognize us best during the holiday season, when we display peace on earth atop our roof. Yopoa houses 222 senior-only retirement apartments. 210 of our units are federally subsidized and offer low-income rents to our residents who are 62 and older. The average age and income of our residents is 76 and $13,702 per year, respectively. For those who qualify for subsidy, they pay approximately 30% of their monthly income for rent. You can see why that's important when your yearly income is just around $14,000. Yopoa is owned locally by Evergreen Union Retirement Association, or EURA for short, a nonprofit corporation formed by five Lane County labor union locals. Manor Management Services proudly manages Yopoa Terrace under the direction of the EURA Board of Directors. EURA Board meets regularly to discuss Yopoa's operation, and the board members truly care about the well-being of our residents and the preservation of Yopoa, its structure, and its subsidies for many years to come. So tonight, the reason I'm here is to speak in support of the resolution approving low-income rental housing property tax exemption for Yopoa Terrace that's on your agenda tonight. This exemption is an important piece of a much larger funding puzzle in order to help preserve our subsidies for many years to come. Following me tonight is a resident of Yopoa Terrace who can kind of give you a face to the building and tell you a little bit about the people that we serve. Thank you for everything you've done for us thus far in this preservation project. There's many pieces to this puzzle, and we appreciate everything that you guys have done. So thank you.
Thank you. Bob Wies, followed by Philip Dacho, or Dot Chow.
I'm Bob Wies, and from Ward Seven, and I've lived at Yopoa And I've lived at Yupoa Terrace since 2002. And in my own defense, I trike. I don't, I'm not one of those bad guys in the car, so I trike everywhere, just to tell you. I want to do two things. One is to thank you for the help that you've done so far. I mean, I, there was a time when it was a very real possibility that we would not be able to meet HUD standards, and therefore, these 200-and-some people would not have a place to live. And you really helped us get that thing started. It's, and the gratitude isn't just for me. Last time I came here, I was kind of talking about me, and it's, we're not talking about low-income housing, we're talking about my home, and, you know, it's, that's where I was. But this time, I'm here because I talked to the residents, and they were very thankful for what you've done. And the second thing I want to do is speak in support of the revolution, yes, support of the resolution for approving the low-income property rental housing tax exemption. I have no idea what that is, but that's what Kelsey told me to say. And I also understand it's part of the piece of getting our HUD building up to score. But I wanted to tell you a little bit, these are people that I have talked to in the last week. We have poets, construction workers, writers, widows, businessmen, nurses, an airline food supervisor, drug and alcohol councilors, people who've come from the Mission, musicians, ministers, farmers, waitresses, paralegals, fishermen, activists, cattle ranchers, and we have two people who at one time served on the city council. So we aren't just low-income housing. My job is to try to put a face on the decisions that you make. And I'm also here because Kelsey promised me cookies. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Dacho, and I apologize if I've got that pronunciation, followed by Crystal Abrams.
Good evening. My name is Philip Doco. I work for the Housing Development Center in Portland, Oregon. I am the project manager for the refinance and rehabilitation of Yupoa Terrace. Yupoa is 50 years old. It's been very well managed, but it has not had a major recapitalization in 50 years. And it was built to standards that are also 50 years old. So we have planned a $30 million rehabilitation. We are focusing our efforts on work that will improve the energy efficiency of the building. So we're gonna strip the outside of the building off. We're gonna replace the outside skin of the building with insulated wall panels, triple pane windows. We are going to replace all of the heating and cooling in the building, upgrade electrical, and upgrade, do a major upgrade on the plumbing system. We'll also do common area improvements, new finishes to the units. Our goal is to put the building right for another 40 years, essentially, before it's gonna need major recapitalization. There, there's Section 8 rental subsidies that apply to 210 of the units out of the 222 units in the building. We are going to do a major refinance with using affordable housing tax credits. And because we need to transfer ownership of the property from Evergreen Union Retirement Association, a single-asset nonprofit corporation, to a limited partnership in order to syndicate affordable housing tax credits, we are going to, we have a new owner of the building, and because the existing property tax exemption was granted so long as the property did not transfer ownership, we now are coming to you to ask for a new tax exemption. That tax exemption provides about a $50 per month break to all of the residents. And without it, we are unable to increase the rents because of the Section 8 restrictions and the affordable housing tax credit restrictions. So if we do not, if the property tax exemption were not approved, it would make for about a $2 to $3 million hit on our financing package. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Abrams, followed by Sean Bowles.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Abrams, and I'm in Ward Two, and I'm the Chair of the Eugene Pollinator Protection Committee, as well as the Pollinator Project Manager at Beyond Toxics. And I'm here tonight because I would like to advocate for the council to adopt the Bee City USA Resolution to become a Bee City affiliate. The University of Oregon has recently adopted the Bee Campus Resolution and are officially recognized as a bee-friendly campus right here in Eugene, Oregon. In Oregon, we already have Ashland, Gold Hill, Phoenix, Talent, and Wilsonville, all committed to their Bee City USA certifications. Announcing that Eugene is joining 70 other bee cities across the U.S. will really help amplify the message that bees need our support right now. And our city currently does a really awesome job at building native bee habitat in our open, in our parks and open spaces, and managing our native pollinators' habitat without neonic's and bee-killing pesticides. So I think we should be recognized for these efforts and join Bee City USA and continue to raise awareness about how to help our native pollinators now and far into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Bowles, followed by David Piccioni.
Sean Bowles, 105 North Adams, Eugene, Ward Seven, speaking as a private citizen. I'd originally intended to address a couple of items this evening, but I find I can't, so I've reworded my testimony to a more generic form. Does the city of Eugene have an aesthetic? Based on the last several years of run-and-gun development, under a city council, the majority of whom appear to be enthralled to a city manager who appears to neither understand their value planning and development processes, the answer is clearly no. Capstone is but one example. The council is increasingly asked to embrace outscaled ugliness in the guise of progress. I've supported some of these projects in their initial stages, but found that many were very different when they came to council. One might almost say bait and switch. Convoluted proposals, which require substantive changes to code, would never see the light of day if we had a design review process in place. In light of testimony and support of such projects from the usual business babbits, many of whom should know better, I want to urge you not to run roughshod over the few protective standards and ordinances we have available. Saying no to bad planning is not being anti-business, but rather is a protection which citizens expect from you. To developers who make such requests, I would ask for a return to the drawing board. Look for something that satisfies the existing constraints and makes our community more beautiful. Until then, it is up to the council to save us from further folly. Thank you.
Thank you. David Piccioni, followed by Lisa Arkin.
Hello, Dave Piccioni. Yeah, I basically just want to ask or say that I would like to be able to smoke downtown tobacco. There's a Buddhist story where the master and the student were talking, and the master asked the student to go out and get a plant that's not medicinal. So the student goes out into the forest, looks around, comes back empty-handed, and he says, "Every plant here has a medicinal value." And I thought about that, and it was, well, what about poison oak or poison ivy? And then I learned about homeopathic medicine, which actually consists of using the thing that is hurtful to you, but in such a small dilution that its effect is the opposite as it would normally happen, and you would get cured. I think, oh, and I just want to ask if people that smoke cigarettes would please put their cigarettes out when they're done, put them in their pocket, don't litter, it makes us all look bad. It's environmentally bad, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Arkin, followed by Kristin Bartels.
Good evening, Lisa Arkin. Thanks for this opportunity. And I'm here to ask for your support to make Eugene a Bee City USA. And never before has a city had such a great opportunity to save and protect a species or a group of species of wildlife upon which our own survival is so tightly connected, and those are pollinators. And there are two reasons, among the many, why Eugene should really welcome this opportunity. The first one is it supports our climate recovery plan, because bees are important for the survival of over 90% of all living plants and trees and bushes that flower. They need bees to create the next generation of seed so that plant can continue. And of course, plants are drawing down carbon, are they not? And the second reason is bees are incredibly important for food security, and in uncertain future, will need to be able to produce food. Families will be able to produce food in such a way as to support themselves. For example, in West Eugene, we partner with Huerto de la Familia to encourage gardens for families that are low-income and also Latinx families. So just two of many reasons. I also want to say we appreciate the diligent and hard work of city staff to keep our parks and open spaces full of wonderful habitat for bees, and I hope that you'll continue to support that. So be a wonderful bee city in the years to come, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Kristin Bartels, followed by Kimberly Gladen.
I'm Kristin Bartels, and I'm Ward Five, Mike Clark's Ward. I'd like to start by thanking you for the opportunity to come before you and be a part of the city's processes in the forum to speak. The proposed amendment to the definition of compacted material in the solid waste administrative rule will lead to Eugene businesses experiencing increased disposal costs and have a negative impact on recycling and toxic material recovery. The proposed changes to the ordinance will cause many commercial and multifamily customers to pay 150% more for the same services. For example, those who have homeless going through their trash will now be susceptible to compacted rates, something we all know happens a lot downtown. Not to mention, tracking all of these billing exceptions will become a nightmare for haulers as it would have to be enforced by the city fairly across the board. Besides being a concerned citizen of Eugene, I'm also a managing partner of Team Recycle, a local company whose focus is on decontaminating the recycling stream and ensuring recyclable and toxic materials are recovered from the garbage. Team Recycle works specifically with businesses, many of which are multifamily property management companies, where many residents don't separate recycling. This new definition will prevent the retrieval of heavy or awkward toxic and recyclable items that can't be removed from outside the can. On a daily basis, we recover over a dozen toxic items. This list includes TVs, appliances, paints, batteries, and many others that end up buried in the cans and subsequently contaminate the recycling or harm our environment when they go into the landfill. Last year alone, we recovered over 250,000 pounds of recyclable and toxic materials that would have been disposed of improperly. Before the proposed change, we were on track to recover 500,000 pounds this year, but if the change to compacting passes, that number will be reduced by a third. This means 150,000 pounds of toxic and recyclable materials that Team Recycle would have otherwise recovered will end up in the landfill this year alone. Our neighbor Springfield does not prohibit the recovery of these items, and as such, we experience a higher tonnage of recyclable and toxic material recovery. This proposal is not in alignment with the green initiatives for which Eugene is known. In fact, it's in direct conflict with Eugene's environmental standards. I ask that the city manager's office and city council change the definition of compacted material to allow the retrieval of recycling and toxic materials without being charged compacted rates. At the very least, I ask that the deadline of August 3rd be extended so we have time to vet out the potential enforcement, environmental, and economic repercussions with the city manager's office. We have committed to working towards being a carbon-neutral city, and this is the perfect opportunity to utilize an innovative service to make that happen and set the standard for other communities. Thank you for your time, and I really appreciate your service to our community.
Thank you. Kimberly Gladen, followed by Christina Chapman.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gladen, and I live downtown. First, I'd like to put out a little challenge tonight to the environmentalists in the room to reduce your carbon emissions and get rid of your car. I have been car-free for 27 years, and I think all of you can too, and that will really reduce our carbon emissions. The other thing I'd like to encourage the council, because the vote is coming up, to say yes to the smoking ban. There still will be places in the downtown for people to smoke. Several businesses have voiced their opinions on wishing to opt out, and those will be nice little smoking areas where those who wish to smoke can, and the rest of us who like to breathe clean air will be able to do so. It's for everyone's health. You know, I've heard a lot, it's your right to smoke, but it's my right to not have to breathe polluted air. And it's a children's right to not have to breathe polluted air. So I'm gonna encourage you to do that. The other thing is, we really need to start enforcing our laws against dealing drugs in this town. There is a huge problem out there, and it's been allowed to go on for years and years and years, open drug dealing with no consequences. Eugene is nationally known as a place where you can do what you want, deal whatever drugs you want. This has caused a lot of problems with our youth, with homelessness, health-wise for people, and it affects every single aspect of our community. The laws we have in our books need to be enforced, and it's made our town dangerous. I mean, there's attacks on our bike paths. Today, when I got off the bus, there was a whole bunch of police down there near the bus station, and everyone was talking about the machete attack. So that doesn't make me feel safe, and it makes it hard for me to convince other people it's safe to come downtown. And it doesn't feel good when it's that close to the bus station, or that close to residences, or close to the library, or LCC, or any of the businesses down here that are really trying to make a go of it and providing jobs for people. And those jobs keep a lot of people in housing. And granted, a lot of us are in low-income housing, but a lot of us are working people in low-income housing. And, you know, that's what keeps people in, is to have that job. And so when you make the downtown dangerous like that, you make it hard for those jobs to stay down here and for people to survive. So I think you need to start addressing the drug issue in this town and enforcing the laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Chapman, followed by Brian White.
I do agree on some of the things she said. I am presently homeless, and there are a lot of homeless out there, and they are taking the bathrooms away. That's the first issue. Two, there are a lot of drugs out there, and they're not doing enough to crack down on that. The first point that I didn't make last time I was here was that they are basically judging every homeless person based on one lump sum. They're not separating the fact that there is a lot of innocent, good people out there suffering, as myself. There are a lot of people that actually want to do programs that don't have the means and the financial backup to get the property or the building to do so. There are a lot of people out there that need help, and there's a lot of people like me and Eric who want to make a difference. But we're not given that chance because we're being judged. We're being thrown out of town. We're being- We're being, we want to sit somewhere for 10 minutes. It's hot outside, it's 97 degrees out there, we're all resting to death. And there is nowhere for us to be. The city of Eugene, I was raised here my entire life, and I cannot understand how this town has gotten so bad and so cruel to the homeless. There's a lot of good people out there helping the homeless. I would totally vouch for that. I've seen a lot of them, but there's not enough. There is not enough opportunity given to start new programs that would actually give the homeless a place to sleep. They have left us with two bathrooms, one for during the day and one for at night. Starbucks just recently started opening their bathrooms up to the homeless, but it's not enough. It's not enough. And we tried to make it enough, but it's not. And we are basically constantly being blamed for what the bad ones out there are doing, the violence. I totally agree, the violence has got to go. There are a lot of kids downtown that are runaways that need to go home. But I have a lot of street kids, a couple hundred of them, and I will tell you, someone from the authority, this office, needs to have a conversation with them because their home life is actually worse than living on the street and constantly struggling for a place to sleep. We're getting tickets every single day. I have turned into a criminal my whole entire life, for 43 years, having a clean record. I now have 13 trespass charges on my record just for trying to sleep in this town. We need to help them instead of throwing them out of the street even further. We need to do something about this. It's a major problem. We have a whole lot of ideas if there's somebody willing to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian White, followed by Eric Jackson.
Good evening. Brian White with Santa Pac. I'm here on behalf of Santa Pac to show support for the proposed code clarifications related to the definition of compacted material. Sent all you folks a memo earlier today that outlines our thoughts on these issues and look forward to answering any questions at a later time when you have a chance to read it. We spent some time with staff over the last couple of months chatting about this, and so please reach out to them before you make any changes or decisions on this issue. To be clear, we do not feel that the proposed clarification, the definition of compacted material, has any effect on recycling in the city of Eugene. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Eric Jackson.
How are you? I always say council, and I have to apologize, Mayor Venice, because I don't say Mayor Venice and council. I always say council because where I'm from, it's just the council. First, I got to say, if the trash compacting thing can be tabled, table it and make sure that everybody's on the same page, just listening to the girl in the blue shirt. Second, the chain-link fence that went around the By Two area on Broadway, is that like a safe sitting zone that you can sit and you're inside the chains? Or is that now a planter? I'm not quite sure, nor are the police. But the By Two management seem to be very sure that we're not allowed to be sitting on the sidewalk inside the chains. So please look into that. I sent you guys off a note that Washington Jefferson Park, sitting under the highways between Fourth and Seventh, consider allowing smoking in that park, consider extending the curfew to 11 o'clock in that park, and enforcing it, and enforcing litter. I don't go for litter. Like, if I find somebody else's black and mild tips on the ground, I pick them up because I feel like somebody's going to blame me for it. Enforce litter, enforce curfew, don't enforce sleeping, don't enforce trespassing, don't enforce park bans that are in other parks, make it a sanctuary-type area. On behalf of Sue and Occupy, they're moving to a facility in Springfield in a couple of weeks. But I've talked to a lot of people, and they think that bathroom central, something somewhere in Eugene, bathrooms with showers and oversight, and I think Occupy would be the great match to that if you could consider at any point in time. It's not hospital property, but it's a property that the city might be able to have and put bathrooms and showers and put Occupy as the medical connection in that location or something like that. Council Semple's suggestion that she was talking to me on the streets for, any place to sleep, any place to sleep. You heard the sleep thing, you've heard the sleep thing from me before. This past couple of weeks, almost a month, I've been housed inside with people that are moving one transitional house to another, and I volunteered to help because a lot of people were out of town. And one of the guys was going to bed, and I was going to bed shortly after him inside, and I almost said the words, "Be safe," because when you're on the streets, that's how you close your ending of your day with somebody, or somebody just walking away during your day, is be safe. Because they're not safe. They're not safe to sleep, we're not safe to do anything, and make it safe. Be a city that, like, doesn't put people in jail for marijuana or being poor or unhappy. Thank you.
Thank you. And that closes our, the public forum. Are there councillors? I have Counselor Clark in the queue, Counselor Cyret. Let me start a list here. Counselor Cyret, Counselor Semple, anybody else? Okay, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody coming and their testimony this evening. Mr. Manager, the issue addressed by Kristin and by Brian, I believe, from Santa Pac, the issue of compaction rates being altered and the elimination of recyclable recovery from the waste stream. My understanding, I've only had preliminary information so far, but my understanding is that was an administrative order to alter that. Is that correct?
It's an administrative order. We can get you more information on that. Just for FYI, the comment period is extended by a week, and so there is time for people to get additional comments in, and so that, we would welcome that. And we'll also provide counsel with some additional information on this particular topic.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And I guess the other question is for city attorney. If council wants to weigh in and alter an administrative order in such a case, what are our guidelines for doing so from a time perspective? Is there a certain amount of time after an administrative order like that where council would need to weigh in if it chose to alter the order?
The, so the way the code works, there's only specific ones that actually can get pulled up for council review. I don't believe this one falls in that category. So generally, where your power lies is if you don't like an administrative order, you can adopt a code provision that would supersede it. But most, there's very few fees that, administrative fees, that actually have a provision in it for a review by council. And this isn't one of them.
And so you're sure that, you're not saying you think this is, you're saying you're certain this one has no review process capacity by council?
I will not say I'm certain, because this is the first time that I've thought about this this evening, but I am happy to double-check and follow up on it.
So I think part of it would be, is after we give you additional information on that, and if there's outstanding questions or issues that the council wants to think about from a broader policy conversation, then I think that would be an appropriate conversation to have.
So when did you sign the order? Do you happen to remember?
This one is still open for comment.
This is, so right now, it's a proposed order.
I apologize, I was under the impression that you had.
So I actually haven't signed a final order on it.
Okay. But it's due to be reviewed on what day?
We're in the process of reviewing it. That was going to close on early part of August, and we've already talked about extending it an additional week because we know there are others that would like to get some additional comments into that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hey, Counselor Cyret.
Thank you. Well, Counselor Clark addressed one of the topics I was going to ask about. Thank you, everyone, who came to speak on all the topics. Once again, people raise really great ideas, and some of those we may actually put into place at some point in the future, so don't give up on us. But I wanted to particularly thank the folks from Yopoea Terrace to come and share with us the importance of the action we're going to take, which we will take as part, most likely, just as part of our consent agenda, so it won't be called out as a special vote, but it's the vote to approve the low-income tax exemption that will help continue the subsidized housing at the terrace that's been so important to keeping folks there in housing and in my ward. So although I can't take much credit for it being there, I am really pleased that it is part of my ward. So thanks for coming down and sharing with us about that, and I'm confident that we will pass that for you.
Counselor Semple.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for coming out. I'll miss you until September, so think of lots of good things to say. I will bring Ralph McDonald and the Sustainability Commission's declaration forth to counsel. And I just so wanted to shout out to John Thielking, who comes here endlessly and does so many creative and innovative, helpful things for some of our disenfranchised, suffering people. So thank you, John.
Any other councillors with comments? I also just want to, since this is our last public forum for several weeks, thank you all for coming out, a good variety. Thank you for the climate change folks for keeping us on track, trying to remind us, and the folks who have testified around homelessness and the challenges that you're facing. We hear you loud and clear and take it very seriously, so we look forward to working with you and others on that, and I'd be happy to talk to you. And to everyone else, thank you very much for coming, and I think that closes that part of our meeting, and we are ready to move into our first agenda item, which is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull Item E, but I'll second except for Item E.
Second except for Item E. All in favor of consent calendar except for E? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, that passes, and now you want to speak to Item E.
Okay, that is the manager's salary increase. I want to point out that we're giving a raise of $11,021, which brings the salary to $235,955. The raise is about equivalent to the, almost up to the income of the people of Yopoea. I didn't realize that before, but I know we have a formula, but I really think that is too much.
Other comments? Counselor Semple.
I'd just like to say that maybe as part of process, we could reexamine our evaluations of the manager and police auditor. I find them to be very uncomfortable and not very informative, and people don't participate equally. And I'd like us to do our voting after we listen to everybody. So thank you for the good work, and enjoy that money.
Any other comments? All in favor of approving consent Item E? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed, one, and that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're ready to roll into a public hearing and possible action. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And this has to do with a public hearing around the Comcast franchise agreement. The city of Eugene, the city of Springfield and Lane County, together have granted Comcast of Oregon a non-exclusive public rights-of-way use franchise for the operation of a cable communications system. Metropolitan Planning Commission, or MPC, is the entity designated by the three jurisdictions to oversee the franchise. The existing franchise expires August 1st, 2018, and we have been negotiating the renewal terms with Comcast for the past year and have provided progress updates to the MPC. The parties expect to complete the negotiations within the next few months, and the purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment regarding the proposed ordinance extending the franchise agreement until January 1st and providing an immediate effective date for the ordinance, and councils also being requested to take action on the ordinance. And this ordinance would only extend the term of the franchise. All other terms and conditions remain the same until a new agreement is negotiated.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any, we don't have anyone signed up to testify, so that closes that public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from council about this item? No? All right. Does any councillor object to taking action tonight? No? All right. Council President.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5197, an ordinance extending the term of Comcast franchise agreement.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you very much. That passes. Okay, now we are rolling into three actions, so I'm going to do a little introduction to that. The city council is acting in its quasi-judicial role in considering the proposed Skinnerbut height limitation and Gordon Hotel sign ordinances. The city council closed the records for these ordinances on July 16th, 2018. However, after the records were closed, city councillors continued to receive emails opposing the proposed Skinnerbut height limitation and Gordon Hotel sign ordinances. There are two legal issues we need to address regarding these emails. First, ex parte contacts, and second, whether the emails will be included in the record. So we'll start with the ex parte contacts. First, we need to find out whether any of you actually read the emails. If you did, please raise your hand so I can call on you to describe the substance of the email that you read. I will ask you to state whether this ex parte contact has impaired your ability to be impartial. So I have, I'm going to, it's basically everybody. So we'll just work our way down the row. I'll start with you, Counselor Semple. Counselor Semple, please describe the emails that you read.
I read emails both in favor and against all the stuff about Mr. Obie's project at Fifth Street, and I was in no way swayed.
Okay, so that answers a question about whether you're impartial. Counselor Evans.
I've got the same comment as Counselor Semple, both for and against, doesn't change my mind.
Okay. Counselor Zelenka.
Same goes for me.
Counselor Taylor.
I read both for and against. It'd be hard to say that nothing anyone said changed, didn't change my mind, but it'd be hard to say that nothing affected my opinion.
The question actually is, can you still be impartial?
Yes, I could still be impartial.
Perfect. Counselor Clark.
I read some that were both for and against and have the exact same capacity to be impartial.
Counselor Yay.
Yeah, me as well. I had some that were for, some were against, and I feel like I'm able to be impartial.
Counselor Pryor.
I did see some for and some against, but it has not affected my ability to be impartial.
And Counselor Cyret.
Yes, I also read emails both for and against, and they did not impair my ability to be impartial.
And just in case I end up having to vote, I will also say that I read some for and against, and it has not changed my capacity to be impartial. Okay. It is my understanding that earlier today, city staff contacted representatives of the OB companies to notify them of their right to provide a rebuttal to potential ex parte contacts at tonight's meeting. I understand that OB companies have communicated in writing to city staff that OB companies have chosen not to rebut the ex parte contacts. Okay, the second issue we need to address is whether the emails should be included in the record, and I'm going to turn this discussion over to the city attorney.
And I have Assistant City Attorney Lauren Summers here that will help us through this process, give a little, just a quick brief of how this affects the record and what record we're talking about.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. As you know, as the mayor just pointed out, the records for both of these ordinances closed last Monday night. And the record for purposes of a quasi-judicial land use decision, such as the Skinnerbut height limitation ordinance and the proposed sign ordinance, consists of all the material that is placed before and not rejected by the decision-maker, and in this case, you are the decision-maker. In order to be able to take action tonight, we recommend that you not consider the materials that were submitted to you after the record closed. And there's a motion in front of you, placed at each of your places, that will do that.
Okay, you want to put the motion on the table?
I do, in fact. Mayor, thank you. I move to reject all testimony received by the city regarding the proposed Skinnerbut height limitation ordinance and the proposed Gordon Hotel sign ordinance noted CA 18-3, following the close of the record for those ordinances on Monday, July 16, 2018.
Second.
Okay, and I have Counselor Zelenka in the queue to comment. Anybody else? Counselor Zelenka.
If no councillor was swayed by the testimony that was presented, why do we have to reject it? Why can't we accept it?
That's a good question, Counselor Zelenka. If you were to, well, the reason is that the record was closed. Once you close the record, you have said to the community and anyone who might be interested that you are not accepting new evidence, that you're not learning new things about these proposed ordinances. If you decided to accept the evidence that has come into you since the record closed, you would need to reopen the record and allow other folks to talk to you, too. And that would mean that you could not take action tonight.
It's basically not fair, because everybody didn't have notice. I get it. Thank you.
No, are you clear? Okay, any other, oh, Counselor Taylor.
Does that mean we could open the record if we wanted to?
Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Taylor, yes. Counsel has the ability to open the record if you want to. If you do so, you would not be able to take action on these ordinances tonight.
And we give the appeals court a load of fun.
I think that's a good idea. I would.
So, there's a motion and a second on the table.
I move to reopen the record.
So, there's a, there's a motion and a second on the table, the move to reject all testimonies. So, if you want to move to amend the motion to, move to, right, it would be.
Move to substitute.
To reopen the record. For, how long would you want to do that for?
Until our first meeting in September.
So, there are some, I'm asking about 180 days, because there's, this would be 120 days, but we are the applicants. Oh, okay. It expires in August. Okay. So, the motion would be move to substitute to leave the record open for both of the records until the first meeting in September? Is that your motion? Okay. Is there a second for the substitute?
Okay, so we're back to the initial motion, because there's no second for that one. All right, everyone ready to vote on the original motion? All in?
Wait, wait, wait a minute.
Oh, sorry?
Just all of a sudden got really, really confused. We're voting on the height limitation now?
No, no, no. We're voting just to reject any testimony that came in after the record was closed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sorry. I should have repeated that to make sure you were clear.
Right, got it.
All right. All in favor of the motion?
We have a choice.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Opposed. One. Okay, so that passes. So, we're clear with that. And now, we can actually proceed to the business at hand. Okay, so the first action item is ordinance concerning the Skinnerbutte height limitation area and amending section 9.6715 of the Eugene Code 1971. Counsel President, want to put the motion on the table?
Yes. I move to adopt Council Bill 5192, an ordinance concerning the Skinnerbutte height limitation area.
Second.
Any discussion, need for clarifications before we vote? Counselor Semple.
Yeah, I like this project a lot. I like the drawings of it. I don't mind that the building has a tower on it. Need another five feet to make a story. A story is like 10 to 15 feet in a regular building, and I see that this building's got a tall first floor, which makes sense in a hotel. But in seven stories, I bet you could squeak out five feet. So, I think the design could go forward without the change. And since 30 feet is a good two stories, I don't really want to see that street filled with buildings that tall. And I'm discouraged that when you want five feet, you asked for 30, because you're really asking for something else. And I don't like to mix up the issues. And we have an issue about height, and we have an issue about a sign. But it's convoluted, because you could put the sign on or on top with this height limitation. I think if you want five feet, you should ask for five feet. So, I'm not inclined to vote for this.
Counselor Zelenka.
Better fits in the next one, but I'll ask it anyway. My understanding is that the sign ordinance change, if the height limitation is approved, that they could build walls and put a sign on it, and that would be perfectly legitimate.
That is the case. The sign code allows for wall signs, and we have examples. In at the Fifth has a sign. The Hilton has a sign that's on a wall. Eugene Hotel was brought up in the testimony.
So, the real difference is whether or not you want an open, transparent sign that has no walls around it, or one that's on a wall.
If the, if the height is not an issue.
Right, provided the height is not an issue. That's correct.
Yes.
Once we prove the height, then the sign could be put up on walls. But if we prefer to see it open on a trellis system, then we would grant them the exemption. But they could turn around, if we didn't grant them the exemption, to turn around and build it anyway, if we approve the height.
I'm not sure if the design exactly as proposed would be able to go forward, because they would have to comply with our sign code, but.
Yeah, roughly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so, I don't know that we're accomplishing anything by voting against it, because you're probably still going to get, I'd rather have an open sign than a walled sign. But I think it's, if I had the choice between the two, that's more aesthetically pleasing to me. And as far as the height limitations concerned, I think this is a minor adjustment to it. So, I'm in favor of that as well.
Counselor Cyret.
Thank you. So, I think it's important, and I disagree with those who have said that this, these two issues are being conflated somehow. They are two separate issues. And my understanding is this height limitation would apply to the Sixth Avenue, not just, it's not an exemption for this proposed building. Is that correct?
That is correct. And it was a staff recommendation that fixed the height at the 530 feet above sea level. That was not something that was specifically asked for by the developers.
Yeah, so I think that's an important distinction. It would apply to any future development along this corridor. And, you know, I think the height protection has been a good one to protect the view shed of the butte. But I also think that this modification will not create undue harm to that view shed, and it's going to assist us in our goals in growing up in our urban core, which is something we've identified as a high priority to create more housing downtown. So, I think it's possible to think about it in that context and not about some kind of special dispensation we're giving to one project. It's actually something that I think, it's a small section of town, but we could achieve some of our housing goals by allowing this increased height there.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Other than the aesthetic of the view shed, is there any reasonable argument to be made for having a height limitation in our downtown core?
Do you mean an additional height limitation beyond the existing zoning?
Having it in the first place. Let me just get you off the hook and make my point instead. For years, I have been arguing that we should, in a reasonable community, should, at least for housing, be growing out in a reasonable manner as it grows up as well. It's a balanced approach to the growth we've seen in our community. But this community has said loudly and clearly, nope, we're absolutely not going to grow out. We're going to grow up in our core. So, any argument at all that we shouldn't be growing up tall is silly, because our community has already made it perfectly clear that that's exactly what we should be doing. And these folks are providing a really nice way to do that in just the right place. And I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Counselor Taylor.
I'm confused. If we approve the height exemption, are we approving a sign on top of the building?
They're two different pieces.
But.
No.
Are they able to put the sign on top of the building in that height?
If you approve the height, they would be able to build a structure on top of the roof as they've designed the building. The structure could be similar to the one at the Eugene Hotel. It could be basically a box, and then they could put a sign on the outside of that box. And that would allow the sign to be classified as a wall sign instead of a rooftop sign. And so, your action for a height amendment would not allow them to put a sign on top of the building. It would allow them to build a structure on top of the roof that they could then put a sign on.
And how about the lighting of the sign? Would that have any effect on it?
I'm not sure the specifics of what they proposed, but they would have to follow our sign code. And so, it would be similar to any other wall sign in the city where it follows lighting requirements.
And if we vote for the height exemption and against the sign, what's the effect? Just that it will be a wall sign?
That's, they would probably build a wall sign that would allow them to do four sides of the wall if they wanted, so they might end up putting up four signs instead of just a single sign. But what they do is not something that we would be specifying.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Oh, I have round two, Alan. Sorry, Counselors like.
Yeah, right across the street is the Hilton. And I was trying to find if I could see that in here. I can't remember. It's another packet. What's the height of the Hilton compared to this building, this new height limitation right across the street for that entire several blocks on Sixth?
So, the height of the Hilton is about 150 feet, which is what's allowed in the C3 zone. The proposal would allow the buildings on the north side of Sixth to go up to about 110 feet. The one other clarification is that it would be an absolute max of all structure. So, anywhere else in the city, you're allowed to exceed the stated height limit for antennas or other, the elevator boxes and things like that. In the Skinnerbutte height limitation area, both as it is now and as it is proposed, the height limits would be absolute maxes, so no towers, no antennas, no satellite dishes can exceed the height. So, it's.
40 feet below the Hilton.
So, yes, 40 feet.
Or maybe more if you added other stuff on top of it.
Exactly.
As they actually, okay, thanks. That's right across the street.
But the ground's low.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this action? Okay, all in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. There we go. It passes. Thank you. All right, so the next related action here, an ordinance concerning a roof sign for property identified as map tax lot 170331102800. Counsel President.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Council Bill 5193, an uncodified ordinance concerning the Gordon Hotel sign.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this item or questions? Counselor Semple.
When I first saw this, I thought it was going to be neon, kind of a soft red, old-fashioned neon. And now I read it's going to be LED. So, that kind of makes a difference to me. And I don't know if anybody can give me any more information. I know it's more energy efficient, but I just wonder how it's going to actually look. The picture looks like kind of neon tubing, and I don't know enough about lighting to know, you know, is it going to be, it could be flashing red lights. Sleep here, sleep here.
Does staff have any insights to offer on this?
I think Will is looking for.
I think so, right.
I assume there's no limit on how bright you can be, so. And is, you know, is the sign what we saw? It just says Eugene Gordon Hotel. No leaping chicken or anything that would make me vote for it.
The way that the code or the ordinance is written would be, instead of define it based on that picture, would be to define it by the criteria in the ordinance, which is about the area, the square footage of the sign, the opaqueness or solidity of the sign, the height, the mounting height, and then that it must apply by structural codes. So, there's no requirement that it must say anything specific, or that it may or may not have leaping chickens.
Well, I like the leaping chicken, because Fifth Street has a chicken, and the White Stag deer is leaping. I would like to point out that White Stag was a Portland company making ski wear. It was sold, and then it was sold again to Walmart. And White Stag is one of their women's clothing lines. So, when you see that leaping White Stag, you're seeing an ad for Walmart. So, anyway, I'm just wondering about this sign, since it's, you know, it could have moving lights, colored lights, and it seems like it has a lot of leeway as to what it could actually be. And that just is a little bit of concern for me. It's a lot of light. It's downtown, you know? But the same thing is true for if there's a sign against the building. I just don't know how glaring it will be. And there's one made to say, don't glare, and don't have a sign. I find this very confusing, this one. So, maybe someone else can speak.
Counselor Cyret.
Thank you. So, this would be a specific waiver for this project and not a change of our sign code, correct?
Correct.
So, I'm in support of granting this waiver for this project. This topic has pointed out to me the need for us to review our sign code, as we heard from a former city counselor at our public hearing, who helped craft the current set of codes a number of decades ago. Why do we require signs to be mounted on the sides of buildings rather than having the option of one mounted on a roof? I doubt anyone in this room can answer that question. And I feel that if we can't provide some rationale for these requirements, I question why we have them. So, I agree with another former city counselor who spoke this evening, that perhaps it's time for us to develop a design review process to help inform some of these decisions, so that we're not faced with making exceptions and puzzling through things one situation at a time. In regards to this specific project, I cannot predict as some folks who came and spoke at the public hearing that whether or not this sign will be a future marker, that our downtown is the place to be. But I can say, I think it will bring character to the project that wouldn't be provided by setting the sign on the side of the building itself. So, that's why I'm voting in support of it.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I think that the notion of reviewing our sign code is a good one. I think we should probably do that. I think this has raised a lot of questions about it. I think the Planning Commission, part of their way they went on this was because they think we should probably stick with the code or else review the code. And it was really a message to us that we should probably review our sign code. With regard to whether the sign should be transparent or on the side of a structure that would have to be built, I think a sign on a trestle is definitely a more attractive sign than one on the side of some box that's put on top of the building. So, I definitely think that's probably the better way to go. And as to what would be actually on the sign, we've been through the whole thing about how we can't control content, so I get that part. But I'm imagining that if I were building a hotel, and I were putting a sign on top of the hotel, I would probably want to put a sign that tells people, this is the name of my hotel, rather than a dancing chicken. Unless the dancing chicken had the name of the hotel underneath it, and it was somehow the Dancing Chicken Hotel. But, you know, it's the Gordon Hotel, and I figure probably there's not really a place for a chicken to be in the Gordon Hotel sign. How bright it is, I think, is another question. LEDs can be as bright or as dim as you want them to be. I think it would probably, knowing In at the Fifth, which is another example of a project built by these same developers, it's an attractive sign for a high-end hotel. And I would think that probably they would follow that same aesthetic. You know, the Biff in Back to the Future, you know, flashing neon, I don't think that would probably be the kind of sign that would be here. So, I'm reasonably confident that it would, that a trestle sign would definitely look better than a building, that probably the Gordon Hotel is a reasonable content for the sign. I think it'll probably be done in a tasteful way, and I'm comfortable supporting it.
Okay, Counselor Taylor.
I would really like to have more time to think about this, rather than making an exception for one project. But that's why I tried to keep the record open, but that didn't work. I agree that if we have to decide now, apparently, we already decided when we did the height exemption, that they can put a sign as high as they want to, right?
They can put a sign up to that height of 530 feet above sea level, yes.
If I thought it would work, I'd just make a motion to postpone, but I guess that's what I tried already. So, I would really like to know more about what the sign's going to be like. And I, if, and I don't think we should do it for just one developer. If it's possible, then it would be for everybody. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with what several of my colleagues said tonight, as I agreed the other night. And I may have missed it, but I, coming out, but I did ask. and I, I may have missed it, but I, coming out, but I, I did ask for a work session poll on the, reviewing the sign code, so I hope we're gonna, we're gonna see that at some point, and I probably should have, I probably dropped the ball and should have followed up with Beth, so I apologize for that, but I absolutely want to put out a work session poll on reviewing the sign code. In the fall, the dancing chicken idea. Does anybody here know what the Fistery public market was when it was originally? Yeah, well, so Casey, think about art here, man, I'm just saying, you know, who knows? Anyway, thanks.
Councilor Zelenka.
So, actually, having this be an exemption or a uncodified ordinance is actually a good thing, because then it allows us to do a case-by-case basis, and I think that's the way this should be decided, so. Do you know if the sign code would allow it to blink?
I don't know that.
I hope it doesn't. We can address that if it does in the sign code revisions, which is not exactly on my top 100 things to do, but which direction would the sign be facing?
South.
We didn't specify that, the, the drawings indicate that it would be facing east, which makes sense, it's facing the direction of traffic on Sixth.
All right, and Casey, please do not put a dancing chicken on your sign.
I'm just saying, man, I'm just.
They like chickens.
Blinking chickens?
I like chickens too.
Okay, are we ready for a vote on this now? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's great, that passes, excellent. Okay, now we are on to number six, action, an ordinance vacating East Fifth Alley located between Pearl Street and Oak Street, and a portion of Pearl Alley located between East Fifth Alley and East Sixth Avenue, and providing for an effective date. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Council Bill Number 5194, an ordinance oddly, vacating the portion of East Fifth Alley located between Pearl Street and Oak Street, and a portion of Pearl Alley located between East Fifth Alley and East Sixth Avenue, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Discussion, questions about this item? Councilor Zelenka, and then Councilor Evans.
Why did we have a separate packet? Did some of the packets not include it or something, or is there something different?
It's, it's not different, it's that it didn't actually go out in your packet that you received, at least for some of the packets, I don't know if maybe you happened to get one, but it wasn't included in the packets, and so it needed to be separately distributed. The piece that was missing, you, you received the AIS, you didn't have the ordinance that you're acting on this evening, nor the findings, the things that you absolutely need to have in front of you this evening when you act, and so that's why they're, they were emailed out to you, and also they're in front of you.
Right, the difference is the ordinance and the findings.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Evans?
No, nothing really, I just want to know if we can get the chicken to dance in the alley.
Boy, that was a nice little connection.
Excellent. Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and that passes, excellent, thank you all. And now we are on to action, item number seven, an ordinance concerning the location of recreational retail marijuana uses and amending sections 9.2160, 9.2161, 9.2450, 9.2451, 9.3115, 9.3116, 9.3146, 9.3210, 9.3211, 9.3515, 9.3810, 9.3811, 9.3910, and 9.3911 of the Eugene Code.
1971.
1971. I left the last number off, too much. President?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Council Bill 5195, an ordinance concerning the location of recreational retail marijuana uses.
Second.
Okay, discussion, comments, questions about this item? Councilor Taylor?
I will be voting against it. I think that we should let businesses succeed or fail on their own without our, without our help.
Okay, Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to support this either, I think this is ironically government overreach, and I don't know why we're intervening in a marketplace that we've never intervened before, it sets bed precedents, and eventually this will just work its way out. There's only nine in one proposed pot stores in the downtown, out of 250 businesses, that's 4%, so we're not being overrun by them, and most of them have actually not opened in the last six months, only, only several of them have, and I'm not sure exactly how many of them are, but I think there's only one or two that's actually opened in the downtown since this year, so of the, of the, how many do we have? 54 issued license, and, and, and so I think that, that this is someplace we shouldn't venture into as a city council.
Councilor Cyret.
Thank you. Yeah, I do not support treating these businesses differently than other legal businesses. You know, bars are also heavily regulated by OLCC, and we do not have a buffer between those, and I would say they create more of a public safety issues than these retail businesses where people can't use the product on site. I did ask for updated or for us to have statistics on, on criminal activity near the retail businesses. At our prior work session, I recall that EPD said that overall crime was reduced around these businesses, they speculated because of the security that was required there, and the only criminal activity that, that went up at all was fraud, which they attributed to people trying to use fake IDs to enter the businesses. I noted in our packet that under related city policies, none were listed, since it says that there has never been a minimum distance requirement between specific businesses in the history of our zoning code, which has existed since 1948. And as Councilor Zelenka pointed out, I think in terms of percentage of overall retail, there's still a small fraction of what's downtown. And then in terms of some of the public health arguments, I would say that the buy-two store that was mentioned earlier in public comment is more of a threat to children's health than the businesses that can't even allow people under 21 into their stores.
Okay, Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm generally speaking in favor of this ordinance, but there was a gentleman who gave testimony that talked about some of the rather complicated unintended consequences as a result of some things that may need to be grandfathered in one way or another in order to be able to address those unintended consequences. I have to say that I didn't prepare or speak with that gentleman to learn further, one of the, some of the things he was talking about, and if I, if I have to, I'll vote in favor, if I have to decide tonight, I'll vote in favor of this. But I really do wish we could come back and talk about some of the unintended consequences, and maybe mitigate for some of them if possible, so if any of my colleagues have an interest in having a discussion at a future point, I suppose tinkering and looking at some of those questions, maybe adding to this at a later point, I'd, I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, Councilor Pryor.
I have been a advocate for government non-interference with general conduct of commerce, and after conversations with businesses downtown and with other representatives of the business community, my thinking has actually been changed in this particular instance. My principle of not interfering unless you really need to, I think, is still intact. I don't think it's the role of government to interfere in, in the conduct of commerce, but I think in this one particular instance with regard to this, these stores in these locations and the potential for future things that might occur, my thinking has been changed, and so I'm willing to support this in this particular instance, but it doesn't necessarily send a signal, but I'm going to start trying to regulate commerce in the future.
Any other comments? Oh, Councilor Zelenka, you won another round.
Yeah, I, I had a couple more comments. One was, two of them that Councilor Cyret brought up. One was around alcohol, when there was rumor that a, one of the stores was going to open at the Ovacy Old Carpet Store right downtown, and all the people got up and up, or I counted within two blocks of that location, there were 16 establishments within two blocks that served alcohol. And I wonder, and arguably, and I don't think even arguably, it's pretty clear to me, that alcohol is a much bigger threat to our, to our society, especially to our children, than is pot, and, and as are the health effects, and causes a lot more damage, maybe because it's so much more widely spread. So if we were going to put this forward from a health perspective, we should be looking at an amendment that also put a thousand-foot buffer between alcohol establishments. And to me, that would be, that wouldn't fly in people's minds, because that would be too onerous. And I, I think the, the principle applies the same to the pot stores, just because they're pot stores, and there aren't that many in the downtown compared to alcohol, doesn't warrant us intervening like we're doing this. The second, third point, I think, is that this won't accomplish much. All the facilities that are here are already grandfathered in, they're going to stay there, and if I got this right, if the ownership of the property and/or the lease changed, it would still be grandfathered in, because it's the use, not the ownership, so perpetuity, those are all going to be that way. And, and so this doesn't change much in terms of, of, of the stores that are there. Another point related to that is, I think we're probably on the peak, and it's probably starting to go down in the number of stores that are in the community, can't say for sure, because there's a moratorium on them, processing the, the applications at OLCC, and, but I think it's probably on its way down, and the market's probably already doing its correction, we've already seen several pot stores go out of business already. Then the final point I would make is the one that Mike alluded to before. So now we're saying in downtown, if the pot store creates a premium for rents, the people that did it already can charge those rents, and the people who didn't rent them going forward can't charge those rents. And you gotta wonder, why would we make a law that institutionalize that? That doesn't make a lot, a lot of sense to me, I don't think that's the council's role. That is actually picking winners and losers.
Councilor Taylor.
I agree with what Councilor Zelenka just said, I, I know there are some people, we are protecting the people who already have the shops, and we're hurting the people who were planning to open one if we do this, and this just isn't our role to decide which businesses should succeed or which one should not. And I think market will take care of itself. Thank you.
I'm going to take an opportunity to weigh in here, I don't know whether I'm going to be voting or not, but I do want to say something about this, which is I think that the larger question here is about the diversity of retail downtown. Do we have a healthy downtown that is appealing and attractive to a broad range of residents and visitors? And so, you know, I think, I'm inclined to, to, to support this buffer with the idea, and maybe with the sort of caveat that I think, working with the business community, that we should make it a priority, that we are attracting other retail, and that we're not sort of sitting helplessly. I don't want to be in a situation in which I say, a, a property owner cannot rent to a marijuana retail operation, therefore he's going to have an empty storefront. I don't think that's really in our interest, I don't think we want to put ourselves in that position. So if we're going to restrict what can open, we do want to create an environment and seek those opportunities where someone can command that good rent for some, you know, for a clothing store, you know, for something else that's happening downtown. So I just think it's part of a larger conversation, and that's what we should keep in mind of, we're looking for a diversity of activities downtown, and how do we promote that? And this is perhaps one way of priming that pump, and then committing ourselves to the next step, which is, how do we draw some of those retailers downtown? So, that's my, so are we ready to vote?
All in favor of a thousand-foot buffer? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed, one, two, three. So it passes, there we go. Okay, on to number eight, action, an ordinance concerning the prohibition of smoking on public right-of-way adjacent to opted-in properties, prohibition of smoking within the downtown core, and allowing for properties to opt out, and amending section 6.230 of the Eugene Code, 1971. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Council Bill 5196, an ordinance concerning the prohibition of smoking on public right-of-way adjacent to opted-in properties, the prohibition of smoking with the downtown, within the downtown core, and allowing for the properties to opt out.
Second.
Okay, discussion, Councilor Sample, Councilor Clark, take it away.
I move to delete the ordinance, section two, in its entirety.
I'll second for this case of discussion.
Thank you. I'm really hesitant to pick out downtown separately in a health issue that affects everyone. If smoking kills, it's, kills downtown, it kills everywhere else. So that's my biggest problem with, with the first one, is that it says we're only going to care about health downtown, you know, it's like the fireworks, we're only going to ban them in part of the city. So I like it this way, because the people who want to have no smoking have the energy to ask to not have smoking, and the people that have planned their businesses around the way it is now don't have to do anything. It would have the same effect if everyone around town can opt in, everyone downtown will get a choice, in or out, it's just how, how we go about looking at it. And I think this is an important enough topic that it should be citywide, so I would like us to drop the part about the ban in downtown and let everyone opt in.
Okay, Councilor Clark, and then Councilor Cyret.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that Counselor Sample's arguments have merit, I believe they're sound and they're rational. Unfortunately, this issue and the discussion of it isn't. The, there's, there's no real discussion about the science of this, so, you know, or why we draw a particular line around this little part of town and say you can behave this way here and you can't behave that way anywhere else. It's arbitrary, and this is an orthodoxy test of whether or not you believe in the, in the most recent, you know, trendy idea about how to control people's behavior. So I, I'm against the idea entirely, so I'll, heck, I'll vote in favor, but I, I don't for a moment believe that the amendment will pass, and I do believe that the intended initial motion probably will. Thank you.
Councilor Cyret.
Yeah, so actually, I cannot support this proposed amendment, and I disagree that, that the idea of a smoke-free downtown is arbitrary or trendy, it's actually based on valid scientific research conducted by public health officials throughout the country. And the idea is that smart, smart public health policy is framed in a way that's based on valid research and is within the ability of the jurisdiction considering it to actually achieve some effect. And if we create, if we were to make this an ordinance that affected all public right-of-ways in the city, we would not have that outcome. I, and I've also questioned if we would then be banning people from smoking in their cars while they're driving in the middle of Highway 99. It's impractical and won't have an effect on public health, whereas the idea of limiting the right to smoke in places that are public, where concentrations of people gather such as parks, and are downtown, actually is based in scientific evidence that those public health policies actually can affect change in people's behavior. We've heard research that a majority of current smokers wish to quit, and these are public health policies that have actually been proven in other cities to help people do that. And at the same time, they help people who don't smoke from having to inhale smoke in these public places where there's a concentration of activity of people being near and around each other on a daily basis. So that's why these types of ordinances are focused on downtowns, on parks, on those locations where you would have that kind of public interaction. So I won't support any of these proposed amendments, I will support the original ordinance that was brought to us by the city manager.
Councilor Pryor.
What she said.
Any, any other comments? Okay, so we are voting on this proposed amended motion. Okay, so we are voting on this proposed amended motion. All in favor. One, two, three. Opposed. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so that goes down. So, we go back to the original motion. Do we need any further, oh, Council Simple.
Since that failed, I move to substitute the following motion for the motion to adopt the ordinance. Move to direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on an ordinance prohibiting smoking on public rights-of-way citywide and allow for properties to opt out.
Second.
Okay. Discussion of this proposal, this motion.
I think that if smoking is bad enough to ban downtown, it's bad enough to ban everywhere. I think this is an equitable solution. This thing came up really fast. It's been two weeks since we had a work session, one week to a public hearing and one week to a decision. If we decided to check out a citywide ban, we'd have to have another public hearing in the fall when we get back. One of the advantages of that, besides we could have a citywide smoking ban, is that people would have more of a chance to weigh in. Two weeks isn't very much, and different factions have different abilities to get their groups together, and not everybody's like Chamberlain can just have, you know, 50 emails by that afternoon. So, I think with the speed that this happens, it would be fairer for everyone to have more time, and I think if we're going to protect downtown, we should protect the whole city. I think that's the honest thing to do.
Any other comments? Council Clark, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I would debate the relative health, negative health impacts of outdoor smoking with my colleague all day long, but frankly, I don't have an interest right now. However, what concerns me is the two desperate classes of people we're creating here. I live in North Eugene, and I can stand out in front of my house on the street and do pretty much whatever I want when it comes to, you know, smoking or vaping or anything else. If I live in housing downtown, I can't. And one of the things we're trying to do is create more and more housing downtown. So, we're doing something now to constrain the folks that can live in that housing, and I'm not sure there's much wisdom in that, considering how hard it is to try and get housing created in downtown in the first place. But again, I have, don't hold my breath at all. Sorry for the pun, that this is going to pass, so.
Any other comments on this? Okay.
Wait, Betty.
Oh, Betty, sorry.
I will vote for this, though I'm going to vote against the ban. I think outdoors is not the same as indoors regardless of where it is, but if we were going to do it, we should have a public hearing. This did come up. We voted this down last year, and then all of a sudden, in a very short time, it's back, and we were not, people, the public were not notified. We were not notified in time to even think about it. Thank you.
Okay. Ready for a vote? So, all in favor of this motion to have a public hearing, a citywide smoking ban?
Substitute.
All in favor. One, substitute motion. Three in favor. Opposed. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so that goes down. So, now, let's go back to the original motion. Any other discussion on the original motion? Council Taylor?
Well, I remember the woman who came who I think probably, I'm not sure, but she may not even have a home, and who said she's a smoker. I think people who, it isn't that easy to quit smoking. I'm not a smoker myself, but I know from people who say that's harder than giving up heroin, even it is really difficult. And just because we say you shouldn't smoke doesn't mean that people are going to give it up. When we passed the, when we prohibited in bars and restaurants, I think that was great, but if you say on the street, too, where are people going to go? If they live in an apartment, it's only right to, right for your co-residents to go outside and smoke. And if you don't have a home, where are you going to smoke? It's just people who work downtown who are addicted, maybe have a 15-minute break, they could go outside and have a smoke. If we say you can't do it there, then they'll be running to a residential area and smoking in front of somebody's house, which is worse. I think people can walk around the people on the street, which is what I do. If I don't like something, I walk, go to the other side of the street or walk around or, I just, I don't think it's, well, I'll be voting against it anyway. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. All in favor?
I have one more comment.
One more comment. There we go.
I'd like to vote against this, but I'm going to vote for it, and the only reason I'm going to vote for it is because of the opt-out. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed. Two, and that passes. Okay. Great.
You have one more thing.
We have one more thing. Resolution designating Eugene as a B-City USA affiliate.
That's easy. Two more things.
Mayor, may I ask for just a point of personal privilege to say a few things here before I read this?
Absolutely.
Okay. I want to say thank you to the folks at Beyond Toxics for all of their hard work in this, and I would like to say thank you to our dedicated staff and our parks folks who have gone well above and beyond the call to try and create a natural environment in Eugene free of pesticides and with a positive impact on trying to protect pollinators. It's a very big deal for me personally. When Beyond Toxics came to me early on asking if I could be supportive of this idea, I said, yeah, we're doing this stuff already, and it's a great idea, and I think we ought to do more, frankly. We have, as a city, already banned the use of neonicotinoids in, on our public lands and in our parks, banned pesticides, and we do an active bit of work to increase the amount of plants that are good for native pollinators. And so, I, this, I think this designation will help us continue that work and do so even more strongly. So, I want to say thank you again to these guys who gave me this nifty hat. So, I'm going to wear this while I read it and say, I move to adopt the resolution designating Eugene as a B-City USA affiliate.
Second. Okay. I have Council Zelenka and Council Taylor in the queue.
Yeah, I'll do everything that Mike said. I absolutely agree with that. I was thinking about this this weekend in my backyard, which is incredibly lovely garden that my wife, who's a master gardener, has been working on for 20-plus years, and it's very lush. And I was watering some cone flowers, and I was looking at the cone flowers, probably about 20 of them there, and there were six large bumblebees and three honeybees on there. And I thought, this is exactly what we should be doing and what we should be promoting. And so, I was more than happy to support this. And one year, my neighbor actually had a beehive. They swarmed, but he ended up getting some honey, and we got some because all the pollen from the honey was from our garden, which I don't take any credit for except for hauling dirt, rocks, and digging ditches.
Council Taylor.
Thank you. This is a feel-good action, and it's the right thing to do, and I'm happy to vote for it.
Right. And as an entomologist, I am really delighted to be able to call this a B-City. It makes me feel like I really belong here. All right. All in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and that passes. Thank you very much. Congratulations. That is a feel-good. And before we pack up, Council Simple has one more motion to put on the table.
I move to extend the open record period for the Moore Measure 49 claim until 5:00 PM on Friday, July 27, 2018, and to extend the claimants rebuttal period until 5:00 PM on Friday, August 3, 2018.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion? Do you want to speak to it first?
I was asked to do this because Planning had some information coming out that has been delayed until tomorrow, and the ending for testimony was tomorrow night, and they just want to have time to read the information and respond.
Council Zelenka?
So, I extended it for a week. The week is tomorrow, so this extends it for another...
Yeah, because the applicant gets to rebut, so the other people want a day.
Okay. Everybody ready to vote on this? All in favor of extending? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations. And that closes it out. We'll see you in September.
Or Wednesday.
Or Wednesday. Well, not in my...
Wow.